I'll call this man to order on Monday, November the 4th, 2019. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Richard L. Bush from the Mount Zion Baptist Church, 1189 Hawthorne Avenue, who is coming forward now, who will give us, um, lead our invocation, also the pledge of flag. So everyone, please rise.
Before I do that, may I know that this may be in an inappropriate time, but as I know that you're getting ready to depart from here onto future endeavors, Mount Zion Baptist Church, as well as the spiritual areas, we want to say to you, thank you. We thank you for all that you have helped us with, all the things that you have allowed us to do in this city to, to help our church, and we want to say, and we wish you well on your future endeavors, and may God keep you and bless you and your family as you do such. Amen. Let us bow our head. Most holy and gracious Father, thou who have been so kind to us, we say thank you. We thank you for this day, we thank you for life, we thank you for health and strength, we thank you for this Thanksgiving season that we're in. Also, dear God, we just come right now saying thank you for Max, uh, Max Baker, for all that he has done for our city, oh God, we thank you for him, we ask you to strengthen him, keep your arms around him, oh God. And God, we ask you, as you do these things, we'd be careful in giving your name the praise in the precious, prominent, prodigious name of our Lord and Savior. Amen. Thank God.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you so much for those kind remarks, and tomorrow is Election Day, November the 5th, and if you haven't already voted, polls will open from seven in the morning until seven tomorrow night. So that's one of the many precious things that we have, and that's the, that's the right to vote, and tomorrow's gonna be a big day for Smyrna, so please take a minute and go vote, go from there. Agenda changes, we do not have any. We do have a couple of proclamations in recognition of Veterans Day, Poppy Weekend, November 9th to the 10th. So someone here that's, I think there is, I'm gonna ask that Mr. Corky Welch, read that proclamation and present that.
Thank you. I'll read it from here and I'll bring it down at that point.
Okay.
A proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Smyrna, Veterans Day, Poppy Weekend, whereas America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call of arms have died in the, on the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of its, of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim November 9th and 10th, 2019, as Poppy Weekend, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy. In witness whereof, I have heretofore signed, set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Smyrna to be affixed upon this the fourth day of November in the year of the Lord, 2019. A. Max Bacon.
Thank you very much. Mayor Bacon, council members, thank you for the proclamation and for allowing me to speak for a moment about the American Legion Poppy Program. My name is Cheryl Waybright, and I, along with Marilyn Blackburn, represent American Legion Post 160, the Auxiliary Unit 160 here in Smyrna. We're delighted to be here tonight and accept this proclamation. Mayor Bacon, the last one that you will do, we hope in the future that we'll be back again twice a year for the same thing. We will distribute poppies on the 9th and the 10th from noon until 4:00 PM at the Crow Grown Atlanta Road on South Cobb Drive and at the Walmart at East West Connector. Please come out and make a contribution, and I have some veterans here today, if you would like to make a contribution now, both Army and Navy. I'm a Navy, Navy daughter and an Army mom, so it was great to meet another-
Those wives, yeah.
Mom and dad, so, um, as noted, the poppy is the symbol, the floral symbol of the American Legion, and it represents much of what we have given individually as well as a nation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have my photographer.
Oh, we have a photographer?
Yeah, like you didn't know, you didn't know there was a camera. He knew that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And we'll, we'll take donations.
Don't be pointing up here, all I've got's a credit card tonight.
I'm sorry, I've got my square.
Do you really?
Actually, I don't, because it's not turkey season. I know where you live.
He has a 20, I saw it.
No, normally, I'd be glad, if I have a 20, you're gonna get it.
He finished checkbook.
I don't have anything. I've got, uh, I don't know, where did that come from?
I, I, K.K. knows where you live.
I promise you, I, I won't go anywhere. Okay. Scott, you come in a little. And we got the second proclamation in recognition of small business Saturday, November the 30th. Tim Gould has got that, and I think there's someone here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have two representatives from the Smyrna Business Association, David Monroe, who's the current president, is that right? No?
Past.
Past president, I'm sorry, and then Nick Dixon will be the future president next year, and so, let me read the proclamation first and then I'll give you a chance to say a couple words, okay?
Awesome.
Um, "A proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Smyrna in recognition of small business Saturday, November 30th, 2019. Whereas the government of Smyrna, Georgia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Businesses Administration, there are currently 30.7 million small businesses in the United States which represent 99.7 of all firms with paid employees in the United States, and are responsible for 64.9% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small business employee, employ 47.3% of employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 94% of consumers in the United States value the contribution small businesses make in their community, and whereas 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said they, said the day inspires them to go to small, independently owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. And whereas 92% of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas 40, 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year, and whereas Smyrna, Georgia supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed that, that Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday now. And therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand upon the cause of the seal, the City of Smyrna, to be affixed upon this the fourth day of November in the year of our Lord, 2019. A. Max Bacon, Mayor. As a small business owner myself, I do know how hard many small business owners work, and, and the effort that goes into, to, to really grow in a business, and how it really does impact lives of our employees and lives of our, of our customers and the community, so, do appreciate all that, all that you guys do with SBA.
Well, that's awesome. Well, thank you so much for this proclamation. We really appreciate it. On behalf of the Smyrna Business Association, and so, as a small business owner, I'm in real estate, and one of my clients said it best when he said where he wanted to live. And he said, "I wanna live near cool stuff." And what is cool stuff? Cool stuff are small businesses, and I think that Smyrna has done such a great job of attracting small businesses, and those small businesses were here first. They're the ones that attracted the builders to come in and decide to wanna build houses that people wanted to live in because of those small businesses, and those people had to go out and take that risk, and there's people continuing to go out and take those big risks in, in getting these storefronts around Smyrna, and when I go to any town, I always look for that small business. I pull up my Yelp, and I look for those businesses that are just there, because that's what makes your town unique, that's what makes your town different, are those small businesses. And at the small, at the Smyrna Business Association, that's what the small business, the SBA is all about, is helping to highlight cool stuff. So, Max Bacon, I know this is your last year, and thank you for making Smyrna a city with a bunch of cool stuff.
Thank you.
that's 376.
And by the way, Nick will be the president next year, and he's organized, we have, tomorrow
It's a public hearing for previous license requests, 2019, that's 376, wine manufacturing
morning, we have a networking event, and he's taken from like maybe 10 people to over
and tasting, 300 Junkel Drive, almost mess this up, Arcanum Ventures LLC doing business
30, that'll be at Cafe Lucia, and then we have a luncheon this Thursday with Andre Gomez from Porchlight, that he's organized, from Musson Turner's and Wade's, as well as-
as Viking Alchemist with Robin Cosar as the agent.
Atkins Park.
Atkins Park. So, he's done a fantastic job organizing the programs this year, so come join us this
And I get all, and I messed up all three names, didn't I?
You didn't do any favors on that one.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is without a doubt, in my 34 years, this is the, the
week.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank y'all.
Get a little photo off. Absolutely.
most conglomerated names.
Get in the middle. You get in the middle.
I mean, nothing personal.
Good? Good? Awesome.
I mean, it's, they're, they're great, but I just can't pronounce them.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank y'all so much. Uh, Ms. Jones, the background.
And I'm a follow suit, so forgive me if I mispronounce them as well. Good evening, everyone. Robin Cosaris will be the registered agent responsible for the manufacturing and tasting of wine at the referenced location. He has been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. He has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the City of Smyrna ordinance governing the manufacturing of alcohol. A background investigation was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department, and it failed to reveal information that would preclude issuance of this license. Staff recommends approval of a privileged license for the manufacturing and tasting of wine for Arcanum, Arcanum Ventures LLC, DBA, the Viking Alchemist, with Robin Cosaris as the registered agent.
Uh, I know the agent is here. Uh, this is a public hearing, is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this previous license request? Let the record show there is none with, um, Robin Cosars, Co- Colsores, please step forward. And this is in Ms. Andrea Bluestein's district, Ms. Bluestein.
Hi.
Just where am I?
Is it Coso, is it Cosaurus?
It's Cosaurus.
Thank you.
Arcanum Ventures, Robin Cosaurus.
It's-
Thank you.
I do.
Well, Mr. Cosaurus, I understand you have a business, a wine business up in Marietta that you're gonna close, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and then you're gonna move down to 300 Junkel Drive?
Mm-hmm.
Now, are you going to make wine there, and, or, and I know you're going to have tastings, um, you know, to prove your, and your product, I understand, is a honey-based cider?
Not quite. First of all, we're going to do everything there. We manufacture, so we'll have tanks. It'll look very similar to what you would see at a brewery, except no brewing, so we'll have tanks, we'll make the honey wine and cider there, we'll also have a tasting room, and a part of our license allows us to package sales for off-premise.
Um, how soon do you think that you'll have it open?
Uh, well, I'll tell you what I hope. When we get the city license, that'll allow us to apply for the state license. I'm hoping to get that by the end of November so we can move our production, and that's assuming the certificate of occupancy as well, so we can move our production over to our Smyrna location. As far as the tasting room, where we're open to the public, it's a little bit gray right now, because we're not quite sure how much we're going to do for a build-out. What I'm aiming for is to have our grand opening on our fourth anniversary at the end of March, so, soft opening in the February, beginning of March, you know, just to make sure everything works.
There's no way we can get a taste tonight later on?
If, uh, if it's necessary, I will run, I can take care of those things. Uh, actually, it would be fantastic if any of you stopped by. Scott actually has been to our current location, and he knows while we're moving. Yes, yes, it's a garage, it's, it's tiny, so.
I understand you've got, have you gotten your privileged license yet? Have you gotten your license yet?
Well, he can't get it till he gets this one.
Uh, no, well, I've got the, I've got the federal license. That's, that's pretty straightforward, they just, you know, go by the book. Um, and then I need to get the city license, and the, both of those then have to be submitted to the state to get that license, so there's a chronology of steps I have to go through.
Well, I think there's a lot of people that are gonna be real anxious to have you open.
I hope so.
No, I think, without a doubt, I think that's not a problem, so.
I am the combination of thrilled and scared to death in this move, but it is absolutely the right thing, and it's going to be a big deal for us, so, and I, I appreciate everything that the various officials at Smyrna have gone through to add wineries, and, I mean, just all the hassle of updating your ordinances, and, and just working with us to make us welcome.
Well, we're very much looking forward to you opening in, in that location, you know?
Thank you.
So, the sooner the better.
I agree.
Anyway, okay, does anyone else have any questions?
Any questions?
No? Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve, um, 2019 dash 376, the privileged license request, 2019 dash 376, wine manufacturing and tasting at 300 Junkel Drive, Arcanum Ventures LLC doing business as the Viking Alchemist with Robin Cosaurus as agent.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. I'll have to say this, Ms. Bluestein, that was an outstanding job. You pronounced every name exactly right, unlike me and Ms. Jones. Thank you very much. We look forward to you getting going and having your grand opening and being successful in Smyrna.
Thank you, and we're looking forward to being part of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item six is formal business, A. 2019, that's 399, approval of Mayor's reappointment to keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Liz Davis. This is a four-year term, it's to expire December of 2023, and I'm very happy to reappoint her, she's been a outstanding member of that, of that board, and she chairs it, and if someone will make that motion, be wonderful. Somebody, I, I got a motion by Ms. Whakerson, secondly, about-
I'll move to approve item 6A, approval of Mayor's reappointment to keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Liz Davis. This is a four-year term to expire December 2023.
I'll second my Mr. Wh, Mr. Norton. Any discussion, all those in favor of the motion? She just does an outstanding job. It's approved 6-0. She actually, actually blocked me in my driveway yesterday to make sure I was gonna come to the event, so. Item 6B, under formal business, 2019, that's 400, approval of Ward 6 reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Paula Weeks, this is a two-year term, expiring December 2021. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very happy to ask Paula Weeks to stay on the Parks and Recreation Commission. She's a talented and dedicated resident, so with, with that, I move to approve item 6B, 2019 dash 400, approval of Ward 6, reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Paula Weeks, this is a two-year term, expiring December 2021.
Motion second. Any discussion, all those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item C, 2019 dash Z dash 401, approval of Ward 6 reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, Michael Seagraves, this is a two-year term, Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Seagraves has been a good addition to the P&amp;Z Board, he's also a local small business owner, owns a very good plumbing company. Um, so with that, I move to approve item 6C, 2019 dash 401, approval of Ward 6, reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, Michael Seagraves, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021. Mr. Welch.
Thank you again, Mr. Rice took over the, the Ward 4 appointment when I switched districts or when, when my district changed, I had actually two people that were in that area that had been on P&amp;Z, but, um, Mr. Rice has done a good job for a long time, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 2019 dash 408, approval of the Ward 4 reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, Earl Rice, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021.
I have motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item F, 2019, that's 409, approval of Ward 4 reappointment to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Carleen McNabb, this is a two-year term to expire 2021. Mr. Welch.
Thank you again, Ms. McNabb has been my appointment for eight years and really enjoys being on the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, I think she does a very good job. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item 2019 dash 409, approval of Ward 4 reappointment to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Ms. Carleen McNabb, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Uh, to Liz Davis and Paula Weeks and Michael Seagraves, Tom Skanzo and Earl Rice and Carleen McNabb, we thank you for your service to the city and making it a great, making it even a greater place to live. Uh, item seven is commercial building permits, A. 2019 dash 396, issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of a warehouse for Perfect Turf Landscaping at 1380 Spring Street, Paulding Commercial Builders, Inc. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
A commercial building permit has been issued at 1380 Spring Road for the construction of a new 2,800 square foot metal warehouse building for Perfect Turf Landscaping. It is located across the street from the AT&amp;T Building. The total estimated cost of the project is $120,000. Staff recommends approval.
This is in Ms. Blackburn's district, Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, at this time, are there any questions regarding this, and is the applicant here by chance? No? Okay. All right. Well, at this time, I'm going to move for approval of item 7A, 2019 dash 396, issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of a warehouse for Perfect Turf Landscaping at 1380 Spring Street, Paulding Commercial Builders, Inc.
And motion second to approve this building permit, commercial building permit, any discussion? All those in favor of the, of the motion? Approved 6-0. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the October 21st, 2019, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the October 21st, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the October 17th, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the 18th Annual St. Patrick's Day Celebration in the Market Village, Saturday, March 14th, 2020, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Sunday, March 15th, 2020, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, 3:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Item E, approval of Atkins Park Annual Crawfish Bowl, Saturday, April 25th, 2020, from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And Sunday, April 26th, 2020, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Approval is also requested for placement of a beer trailer station at the intersection of West Spring Street and King Street. Item F, approval of the closing of the following streets for the Smyrna Parks and Recreations Home for the Holidays, Bank &amp; Stevens, West Spring Street, Bank at Village Walk, Village Green Circle at Atlanta Road, Community Center Parking Lot Entrance from Village Green Circle, and the Library Parking at Village from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. Item G, approval to use council chambers for Smyrna Market Village HOA meeting, Wednesday, November 20th, 2019, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Here, motion to approve the consent agenda.
of a new 2,800 square foot metal warehouse building for perfect turf landscaping. It is located across the street from the AT&amp;T building. The total estimated cost of the project is $120,000. Staff recommends approval.
This is in Ms. Blackburn's district. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, are there any questions regarding this? And is the applicant here, by chance? No? Okay. All right. Well, at this time, I'm going to move for approval of item seven A, 2019-396, issuance of a commercial building permit for construction of a warehouse for perfect turf landscaping at 1380 Spring Street, Paulding Commercial Builders, Inc.
And motion second to approve this building permit. Commercial building permit. Any discussion? All those in favor of the, of the motion? Approved 6-0. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the October 21st, 2019, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the October 21st, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the October 17th, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the 18th Annual St. Patrick's Day Celebration in the Market Village, Saturday, March 14th, 2020, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Sunday, March 15th, 2020, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Tuesday, March 17th, 2020, 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. Item E, approval of Atkins Park Annual Crawfish Bowl, Saturday, April 25th, 2020, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And Sunday, April 26th, 2020, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Approval is also requested for placement of a beer trailer station at the intersection of West Spring Street and King Street. Item F, approval of the closing of the following streets for the Smyrna Parks and Recreation's home for the holidays, Bank &amp; Stevens, West Spring Street, Bank at Village Walk, Village Green Circle at Atlanta Road, Community Center parking lot entrance from Village Green Circle and the library parking at Village from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. Item G, approval to use council chambers for Smyrna Market Village HOA meeting, Wednesday, November 20th, 2019, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Here, most to approve the consent agenda. I get a second, that'd be great. Motion a second. All those in favor of the motion? Sometimes you have to pull it out of them, but it's okay. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. First, obviously want to encourage everybody to get out to vote tomorrow. So it's really an important day for the city. I'm sure other folks will comment it on it, but please do get out. If you haven't voted already, please do so. Want to just touch on a project that Community Development's been working on, Rusty's group, working with a group of involved citizens on updating the tree ordinance. And it's been a year-long process, time commitments by the tree board, a lot of residents, community development staff led by Rusty and Ken Sudrow before he left, the city arborists and some area developers. It's been a really exhaustive process. Council's just getting the, the ordinance here recently, but it's a, it's a, it's something that hopefully simplifies the ordinance in many ways, encourages folks to maintain the trees and their property, large diameter trees, and ultimately trying to maintain the tree canopy for our city. So we'll see, we'll go through it and see what happens, but I really want to thank the residents and Rusty's group for all the effort they put into it. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to invite everyone out for the Veterans Day Ceremony that is going to be by the, the Memorial Park, right here on the corner of Bank and King. Join the City of Smyrna on Monday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. as we honor veterans in the annual Veterans Day Ceremony at the 20th Century Veterans Memorial Park, 2,800 King Street, Smyrna, Georgia. Thanks.
Mr. Corcoran Welch.
Sir, I just want to thank everybody that came out yesterday to keep Smyrna Beautiful 35th Anniversary and any of y'all that are, that are wanting to do something for the community, I encourage you to get involved with this group. They're a multi-award-winning group that do a great job keeping our, our city beautiful and running our recycle center. They'll be happy to, happy to put you to work about four times a year or even more. So encourage you to help them out any way you can. Also encourage everybody to get out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say welcome to some new hires for the city. Brianna Voorhees and Kelly Lance, welcome to the Smyrna family. And then also want to just kind of piggyback off of what Councilman Welch said. Congratulations to KSB for 35 years of service. It's absolutely wonderful to see so many people with the passion to make sure that our city looks as beautiful as it does and continues to thrive and work for us to be a more sustainable community. And then I also want to take time to say thank you to Kate Connor, Harrison Aiken, Ben Edgars, Robin Phillips, Joe Prouse, Danny Puego, Jean Mannke, and Sean Martin. That's our tree board. I noticed that our scarves are gone and it looks a little bare over there, but I just want to say thank you all for that wonderful opportunity for us to, to share in understanding and learning about our trees and the importance of having them in our community. So thank you so much. And also want to encourage everybody to get out and exercise your right to vote. Take care and God bless. Thank you.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Yeah, remember tomorrow, the polling stations will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And it's supposed to be a nice day, although who knows with this weather that we've had. And if you're in Ward Two, we vote at the fire station. So anyway, hope to see you there tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report. I'll just echo my colleagues and encourage everybody to get out and vote tomorrow. Exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Show calls hearing, we do not have anything. We have five people that signed up for Citizens Input, Andrea Bluestein, Country Park, Election
Good evening. How are you? I'm Andrea Bluestein. I'm running for Ward Two Council. I have served eight years so far and I have really enjoyed working with the people of Ward Two. And I'd love one more term, which will be another four-year term. I've gone door-to-door visiting during this period and I've saw a lot of old friends and a lot of new friends. So please, if you live in Ward Two, go to the fire station tomorrow, 7 to 7, vote, and we'll see how things work out. And thank you very much.
Stephen Jones, 2823 Spring Drive, political comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to take this opportunity to encourage the citizens of the City of Smyrna to get out and vote for Derek Norton as the next mayor of Smyrna. I've lived in Ward One for 43 years and Derek Norton has been my Ward One representative for the last four years. He has always been available, transparent, and has had a servant's heart. With the positive growth in Cumberland, in the Cumberland District area, there was certain development that Ward One citizens did not want. That development was apartments. Derek had informative meetings about the 325-unit apartment development that was slated to go into Sports Avenue where the Cumberland Church is located. Those apartments will not be built. With Derek Norton's leadership, that is a win for the citizens of Ward One. With Derek Norton's leadership, there will be no apartments-centric development built at the Emerson Center located on Spring Road. That is a win for the citizens of Ward One. With Derek Norton's leadership, he stopped the proposed rezoning for high density behind the Shell Station and Vinings Point subdivision located on Spring Road, which I live not far from that location. That is a win for the citizens of Ward One. With Derek Norton's leadership, he worked with me to have speed tables installed on Spring Drive and Carolyn Drive to slow down the numerous speeding cars that we had to deal with. That is a win for the citizens of Ward One. With Derek Norton's leadership, he improved the line of sight at the intersection of Campbell Road and Spring Road. With Derek Norton's leadership, he sponsored an ordinance that drivers no longer can hold cell phones or text while driving. Later, that was passed as a bill in the Georgia State Legislature and made into law. That is a win for the City of Smyrna and for the state of Georgia. Derek Norton will bring the same positive, sensible leadership from Ward One to the City of Smyrna if you elect him as the next mayor. Thank you.
Ryan Campbell, 2004, White Cypress Court, Smyrna, Georgia, 3008-2, political comment.
Mayor, Council, it is an honor to be here. I've been a Smyrna resident since September 12th, 2001, and I went to Nickerjack Elementary. I had my first job here, bought my first home here, established my first business here. And it has been a pleasure to run this race and Derek has been honored to run against you. And we're excited about tomorrow and we're excited about the vision that we've brought and the people we've inspired and the people that we've brought into this process. And from day one, we made it about the future, about letting people know that this can be a city of opportunity, that we can bridge the gaps that we have in our community, that we can have a city that's both environmentally sustainable and that has economic development as a focus and that puts people front and center in how they operate. So tomorrow, I encourage everyone to get out and vote. Vote for your city, vote for yourself, and vote for a positive vision. And that's how we will continue the progress that we've made over the last few decades. Thank you all so much.
Susan Wilkinson, 2805 Stone Creek Road, Smyrna, Georgia, reelection, election day
Hi, everyone. I'm Susan Wilkinson and I'm running for reelection for Board Five Council seat. I just want to encourage everyone to get out there and vote tomorrow. I've enjoyed knocking on doors and meeting folks and seeing folks that already knew and in meeting new folks. And I just want to encourage everyone to get out there and vote tomorrow. And I would also, if I'm reelected, I look forward to serving another term and being a strong voice for the citizens of Ward Five and for Smyrna. Thank you.
Marilyn Blackburn, Huntington Trace, election.
Sorry to disappoint you. Good evening. My name is Marilyn Blackburn. I've been a resident of the City of Smyrna since 2000, so 19 years I've lived here, but I've been in Georgia for 33 years. And in 2017, I had the awesome opportunity of being elected as the first African-American female person of color to the Smyrna City Council. And at that time, I also promised the citizens of Ward Three that I would be a true voice, an honest voice, one that would make sure that I took the time to incorporate all the important things that our city needs to be reliable on for. So as I come to you now, asking for your vote and your support again to be reelected to Ward Three, I want people to understand that I am one who stands for environmental stewardship, for economic development, for transportation, safety, for workforce housing, and most important, inclusive government. So on tomorrow, November the 5th, I'm asking you to please exercise your right to vote and vote for Marilyn Blackburn for Ward Three, a true voice for the community.
That concludes the citizens that have signed up. Okay. George, yeah, George, come on, George comes here a lot.
I'm sorry.
Just identify yourself, George.
Yeah, I'm George Mercurious, citizen of Smyrna for over 25 years. Distinguished members, I just want to pay tribute to the mayor. This city has gone through tremendous change over the past 25 years. It's a new day, new Smyrna. And I was, I think the torch has been passed to the new mayor. I hope I'm sure that we'll continue to grow economically, a city that people work together with respect. And, Mr. Mayor, I wish you all the best, long life, happiness, and it was a pleasure to be acquainted with you in some of the studies and, and wish you the best. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, George. George has never gotten that accent. He doesn't have a southern accent, but he's, I love it when he talks. George, thank you very much. Remind everybody tomorrow again, tomorrow's election day, one of the most precious rights we have is to go and vote. Don't think your vote doesn't count, so please go out and vote. As far as I can tell, it looks like it's 7:43, is that correct? I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:44. There's money up, money up. Y'all got your, get your money up. Here, give it. There should be some kind of...